For us, Mr. Colly. Get up and introduce your teams.
We're recording for fun.
Yeah, we're on Zoom.
Okay, I'll say something a little more. All right, well, thank you all for being here. We appreciate the city council's time today. Uh, we've been working on these projects for what, three months, four months now? Um, they've been really big and I'm really proud of the work that all these students have done. Um, students here and students still at the school and hoping that we can see some positive community change here. Obviously, it's my first time working through it as a first year teacher. Um, it's been a lot of fun inheriting a lot of the connections that the city already had with the, um, with these students and with the school. So, um, I think we'll start with the city park bathrooms. So Landry, Zaley and Savannah, if you'd like to come up here, introduce yourselves. And, um, city council, you can ask any questions. They're pretty prepared. I have a portfolio I'll hand around during your presentation too.
My name is Landry Dirksen.
I'm Zaley Wer.
I'm Savannah Shager.
Okay, so picture this, you're getting ready to get to the park with the kids. You tell them to go to the bathroom before and they're like, I don't gotta go. So you get there and about fifteen minutes in, they have to go to the bathroom. So you walk over to the park bathrooms and this is what you see. You walk in and right away you're a little nervous because the ground is not clean. There's no soap, there's no paper towels. There's no curtains or anything, um, for doors and so you feel a little exposed. So, this is a big problem at our park. Um, we sent out a survey to the Hillsborough residents and forty-three percent of them said that they limit their time at the ba- at the park because of the bathrooms. And the park is supposed to be a place where people go and spend time. Um, and so this is a big issue at the park. As you can see from the previous images and videos, there are a lot of, um, uncleanliness going on in the bathrooms and it looks very unsanitary. So our idea is not to completely, um, tear down the building, but just adds, make some renovations to it. Just to make it more appealing to the visitors that come there. Um, our first idea is to paint the outside white. It'll just make it more appealing from the outside. Um, and then when you walk in, we plan, as you can see, the floors were very gross and unclean. We want to add tile to the floors. Um, and then we also want to add a urinal to the men's side. We didn't really show that, but it was very unclean. Um, very gross and the toilets were also gross, but we are going to talk to a janitor or maybe get a janitor hired. Maybe come once a month, which we'll talk about more of that later. Um, as you can see on the screen, we want to add faucet and a sink. Those are very unclean, unclean as well. And we feel that when washing your hands, it should be very sanitary for the purpose that you need to wash your hands. Here, make my thing on dirty. And, um, along with that, we want to add soap and tile dispensers. Cause as of right now, I don't think the tile dispensers work properly. And we feel that that is very key thing that happen in the restroom. Um, and then we also think it's very important, as Zaley said, there's no privacy in the bathrooms. It's all out in the open. And especially for the females, just for their safety and concern in the bathrooms. We feel that they need, um, complete privacy when using the restroom, especially because anyone can walk in that door. So. Um, along with this, so we talked to, um, city council for the city and they're planning already on hiring a jan- a janitor. And so with that, we decided to the, add a log idea, which would be this paper hanging in the bathroom so that people knew, know when it was cleaned and just to make sure. And then a really key part of this is at the bottom, it has a number just in case the bathrooms are currently not clean or there's something that happened in them. And it would either be the janitor's number or the city's number or something like that. So that if there's something that needs to ha- that needs to be cleaned right now, or if there's an emergency, just to make sure that the bathrooms are always staying clean.
When determining the cost, we decided to call a couple of companies. Including with that, it would be seventy, uh, dollar faucet with ninety-eight, um, dollar sinks individually, which we'd get from probably Home Depot. Um, and then we called Dick Construction and they gave us a budgetary quote of eight hundred to a thousand dollars to install new tile floor. This would be about two hundred square feet of porcelain tile, just basic porcelain tile that would be durable. And the labor cost would not be included in that. As for the outside, we would get our gallon of paint from the Hillsborough hardware store, which would cost about forty-one dollars just for plain white paint. Um, to paint the outside. As for some outside help, we decided to call Tabor because we knew their Tabor freshman help in community service at the beginning of the year. And Jane Brewer said they were willing to help paint the outside or do any demo that we needed.
So, um, some really key advantages to doing this project would be that, um, there'd be higher attendance rates. Uh, when we sent out a survey, sixty-six percent of people said that they would, um, go to the park more often if the bathrooms were clean. Um, and then another aspect of it that may not be seen is that there could be profits from it. Because of the RV parking next to it, we think that if the bathrooms were cleaner, that more people maybe would park there. And then al- also, we just know that the city is concerned always for the Hillsborough resident, resident's safety. And we think with these, um, new ideas that more citizens would be safe at the park. So that's our idea. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very good.
Questions, council.
How, how extensive a survey did you do? You said you surveyed the community?
Yeah, we sent it out on Facebook. Um, we had a lot of parents and a lot of the school, um, faculty also responded to this as well. In our school, and then we asked like specifically for teachers and people who had, um, children. Yeah.
Let me get some personal interviews to improve my job.
You think charge of that right now anyway? Uh, falls in a park, so Jerry, um, you may not. You may not know that, but yeah. Yeah, this is what I talked about.
I used to clean with the fire truck down there with the hose.
And in terms of, uh, again, the fixtures, I think I asked you this question before, but you know, anytime you've got something like this that's open to the public and not supervised all the time, you know, I think we may need to think about maybe a little more rugged or a, you know, upgraded, uh, fixtures that would withstand some abuse. And, uh, you know, we've had, uh, we've already had some issues with our bathrooms that we designed for that purpose at the splash pad where we've had some vandalism where people have come in and taken paper towels and toilet paper and trying to plug the toilets and things like that. So, you know, I hate it that you have to think about things like that, but you know, those are some of the things that we're gonna need to think about as we, as we take, take on this project, you know, if, if we, if we're able to do that. Um, I think too, the flooring piece, I love the idea of tile, but at the same time, anytime I think of grout, you know, having to grout something in, I think of makes it harder to keep clean. And so I'm wondering if maybe just polishing that concrete or, or some paint, you know, might be that.
About that, that epoxy coating, get bruised, get skid stuff.
You know, that, that we can wash down, you know, everything in, in, in restrooms like this almost needs to be able to be hosed down with a, with a pressure hose to, to clean it, you know, sanitize it, but you guys really picked a good project, I think, that, uh, that definitely needs work. And then I appreciate all the time and effort that you put into this presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. All right, Violet, Annalise, well, yours up here. Go party.
You're all in your project, man.
Yeah, I just realized. Wrecking one layer.
I am Annalise Jorgensen.
And I'm Violet Klein. And this is our community proposal idea. We are wanting to propose an additional parking lot at the tennis courts.
Just going forward. Oh, there we go.
Okay. So picture this, imagine you're a high school girl going to a tennis meet in another town that you've never been to. It's Hillsborough. Your team pulls up in your van, you're looking for a place to park. You can't find a spot, so your coach decides to just park in the grass somewhere. You play your first match, it's really hot, you're tired. So you go and try to find a shady spot to sit, but you can't find anywhere because all the cars are parked in the grass where you should be sitting. Then you hear a little bit of commotion off in the distance and you look and you see a car tips into a drainage ditch. The car is no longer on four wheels, but it's on three. And this is distracting and, um, just causes an issue out by the tennis courts. This is actually something that happened to us at a tennis.
So as Annalise pointed out, there are a lot of problems surrounding the parking at the tennis courts. There's lots of cars in the grass. And this causes an obstruction to play for the disc golf and we really don't want that, that to happen. Um, this is also a hazard, as you pointed out, with the car in the drainage ditch. We just don't want anyone to get hurt or any cars to get damaged or anything like that either.
So we did a poll of the community member and, um, Grant Shuey, local father, youth pastor, um, and the future Hillsborough High School boys tennis coach. He said that he feels like the parking lots are working, but he'd really like to see some improvement. Um, yeah.
So our proposition is to add an additional seventy-five by a hundred and eighty foot gravel, um, parking lot on the east tennis courts. So there's a big empty lot right before the east tennis courts when you're driving to them, and that is where we want to put our parking lot.
So our estimated cost for this project is a little bit over six thousand dollars. This does not include tax or labor needed to lay the gravel, but it does include the product, the gravel itself, um, and the delivery of the gravel. And we got this quote, I think it's in our handout there from, uh,
the company in like New England or Wichita, somewhere around there, and they transport gravel.
But we couldn't get any, uh, other costs from them, like labor and stuff, because they didn't take us super seriously.
So who does this affect? It affects both Tabor and Hillsborough with their tennis teams. Um, they, there can be a pretty big turnout out there sometimes, especially for like regional meets and stuff like that. Um, so just to have more parking would just make it a lot safer. And this also affects the community, um, both Hillsborough's community and outside spectators who come and watch, who don't really know the layout of our sports complex and don't know where to park and where not to park and stuff like that. Um, also for like flag football and for the fair, this would also just add a lot more parking there.
Yeah, so if you've ever been out to the, the the car crashing, I forgot what they call it. The rodeo out there, there's never there's never really anywhere to park. There's a few parking spots out there, but you see, you get people walking from all over town.
The pool parking lot fills up fast and stuff like that.
So this would just provide more parking for the whole sports complex and the fairgrounds and the pool and all that. So overall, this project affects many people of the community, the youth of the community. And we feel that Hillsborough is a very sports oriented town. Uh, we take a lot of pride in our sports. When you drive into town, you see that sign that has all of our state appearances and state championships. Um, and we think that having a better look out at our sports complex, uh, will just improve people's view of Hillsborough overall.
Questions from the council?
Where'd you get that picture of the car tip?
I took that picture. Uh, I think it was sophomore year, so.
It was a regional tennis meet and there was a ton of people out there and all of a sudden we just hear some noise.
And we look and there's a car tipped.
That's where I was over there trying to figure it all out. I don't know exactly. We both, I think, went over our matches, so I don't know how it all resolved.
Yeah, I think they had to get a tow truck.
Pulled it out somehow.
Yeah.
It was just, um, a car from out of town too. So they were, they just didn't know where to go and stuff like that.
Who owns this lot? The one that's, would you say east of the tennis court?
Yeah, let me show you what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
So, who does the tennis court here? That's worse. This is, I think I got to mention fairly close for you, but a hundred and fifty, would say a hundred and fifty-eight by seventy something?
Seventy-five by a hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty.
We didn't get too close to the golf course.
Yeah, that was the.
And then right like above that is disc golf. So we didn't want to get like, it's really close to the parking lot, but we didn't want to get too close to block that at all either.
Well, parking space is about ten foot across, generally speaking, um.
So you'd have fifteen maybe?
Fifteen, potentially, yeah.
Yeah, fourteen, fifteen.
We would probably try to angle it. I mean, you can't stripe it with gravel, but.
But you could put, you could put, uh, bumpers on.
Yeah, even good stop blocks on it to kind of delineate.
So you, you try to go where cars were fo- facing both?
Well, you could.
And south in that lot.
Getting out, that's gonna be the issue. Getting people in and out necessarily. You gotta have enough room in between them so that they can kind of turn around.
You see the, you see the kind of access roadway on the, on the west side? Would there be something that you could, you could, uh, have them angled, uh, towards the southeast and northeast? And then come out that, that east side and ended curve back around to where that other thing comes in right next to that corner right there? Would that keep it out of the disc golf area that just?
Disc golf runs right. I don't have an overlay of that, but I think the baskets and the tee boxes right here or right here, right here. Baskets around here and so people kind of come this way. You'd have to be, we'd have to measure it. I don't know exactly what we'd have there.
But it seems like that might be the thing where you come in one way and exit out the.
Yeah, that would be the safest way to do it. To talk with Avery a little bit, this, he, his biggest concern was people shank a lot over here on seven and, um, you know, keeping it far enough away. We thought maybe you could even go a little further if you wanted to, but.
I know personally, I'm a golfer and I have a slice, so. And I know I've never hit it, me or my dad or anybody who's ever played with, has ever hit it further than that first court really on the, on the tennis courts there, so.
Be pretty epic drive if you did. That's starting to get pretty far. But yeah, this is, I mean, that, we, we have talked, talked about this one too and tried to run some ideas of how it would work and.
So if you had, is there room enough with north to south to have a car on either side or is it just one?
Yeah, you could do one if you angled them in.
Potentially you could have twenty-eight to thirty cars in there.
Yeah, just be.
That would make a difference.
And nobody's parking on that grass now?
Oh, people do, yeah.
But that's just disorganized for me. You're not, you're not lined up necessarily very well.
Yeah.
Would you put signage and stuff there too then?
You want to put signage? We'd probably actually pour an approach here. A little bit of an approach to get people in and then, uh, the rock and then figuring out how to get people out. It's gonna be the hard part because there's drainage rinse here here. So it'd be kind of wet.
Right, last one here is our park water fountain. Clickers up there for you guys. Should be working for you.
Uh, I'm Anthony Biggis.
I'm Logan Brands.
I'm Sam Sorensen.
And our idea is to improve the water fountains at the park. So right now, the, the big water fountain with the big lion statue and all that does not work at all. And it's just filled with a bunch of rusty water and leaves and it just li- doesn't look great. Um, so if you, there's no water in it and every time it rains, it just fills up with more and more rust and you get rust everywhere and it's starting to expand past just that water fountain. Um, and another problem we're having is we do have that fountain or that spigot out there that you, most kids use to get water. Um, but the biggest problem with that is it causes a bunch of water and a bunch of mud and puddles everywhere. So say your kids are just going out there for like fifteen minutes to play around, they get thirsty, but they're wearing their nice clothes just to get a little energy out. So they go to get some water, but there's a bunch of mud over there and they splash it all over their clothes and now you have to go home, get changed and put a, a whole new brand, maybe new clothes.
So the solution to our problem is that we will plan to replace the old water fountain with a new and improved one. The new water fountain will provide clean filtered water while it's reasonably cold as well. It will also provide hydration for anyone that visits the park. And it will contribute to less plastic water bottles around the park. And because people will know that there will be a reliable source of water for them to drink at the park. And this water fountain was found at prodrinkingfountains.com. So why should we install this fountain? This water fountain is very durable and will not fall down if pressure is applied to it. And it is also very eye catching because it is a different kind of fountain than what people are used to, and it also fits with the colors of the park. This fountain will also provide clean drinking water to the public and is very weather resistant because it is made with a corrosion resistant stainless steel. So it can withstand all the weather elements.
Yeah, so as I said, it's very durable thing. It'll be, it'll, won't be attached to the lion statue just next to it. Let's pour in new concrete and then wilt it down onto that. So it's not gonna fall over anything unless someone like really tries to knock it over. And it also has forty inches tall at the highest part, which is the top of the bottle filler. So you can, if you have an empty water bottle, you just bring that in and fill that up, but don't, there's still two fountains there. There's one at a shorter height so that children who are just like younger and shorter, they can drink from that one. And there's a higher one for if you don't want to lean down as much. It's also made of stainless steel and we'll also get it in green as it's the same color as like those bar things that are around the drive-in thing and the same car as most of the park equipment. And there's a full, all the dimensions and everything on that sheet there. And then, yeah.
Don't know what happened there. Let me get that fixed right. There you go.
So the cost, the water fountain itself, it costs around six thousand dollars, two hundred and eight, six thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. An installation for installing it, we, like around two thousand dollars to hire someone to plum it all up and then saw it for labor around there. So just to me, the total cost would be around eight thousand dollars for the fountain. And, yeah. That is.
All right.
So you guys are gonna donate the two hundred and eight dollars and seventy-six cents, right? So then it all adds up. Any questions, council?
I haven't been down there for a while, so I didn't realize it was that bad. I used to check it when I was working, but since I'm, you know, I don't patrol nothing, I don't.
Well, the service to this fountain is disconnected is what Morgan told me. So that's why, that's why you don't get water. I have it disconnected. But I didn't, honestly didn't even realize it was a water fountain. I just thought it was a lion.
Yeah, it looks terrible. I probably ought to be tore down to put some mouse in there.
How did you guys get to the two thousand dollar estimate on installation?
Well, that's, well, we were thinking that we'd hire a plumber and they would, uh, start working on it and figuring everything out because we'd have to do some new kind of plumbing unless we tear down the lion statue and just reuse what that was. But we would also have to pour concrete and, and then do all that over again. So that's probably around the estimate we were thinking it would be.
With this, uh, the fountain you guys spec, was it able to be, uh, doesn't it be winterized? It's weather resistant, I know that, but is it freeze?
Yeah, it'll, it'll stay relatively the same temperature all that throughout, either if it's super hot outside, like we did triple digits like we did last summer, or if we're in the negatives again, it should just relatively stay the same.
That's always one of the things you worry about with outdoor stuff.
And is this, uh, ADA compliant or do you know?
Yeah, I say.
Diagram again.
I think that I've seen this one before around and I think that this little spigot onto the side is ADA compliant and it'll also short enough that most kids can access that too, yeah.
So somebody in a wheelchair could?
I believe so.
Yeah. Access that lower.
It's forty-eight inches tall at, like the tallest point.
Okay, that's four feet.
Wouldn't the lion float to put that in there years ago? Like get the lion on top. Well, you don't know, I think that's who did.
Would assume. That, that makes sense. Yeah, that would make sense.
I think they donated the money and put it in. Maybe we can talk to them again and put their statue on the side somewhere.
You know, they did donate to the spray park. They put one of those benches in, so. Not, not a bad idea.
Jerry?
Um, my, my question is would we replace or remove the lion or keep it? It looks fairly, looks fairly old.
It is old. It's been in the pond before. I gotta take it out of there.
People in mind is now.
Yeah.
It's not, it's fixed appropriately.
I think we would, uh, we would want your recommendation on, on that, you know, from the park standpoint. About whether we do that or not. Like the, uh, the fountain they chose, you like that?
We have, uh, several sort of variances around, uh, the splash park and the sports complex.
That would be a nice fountain because you could deal with everything with it. And you can't do that with the one that got to your neck. Well, you can't do anything with it now. Even before you couldn't do anything with it, really, to drink.
You know, if, if, if we have, uh, if we've gotten to the point where we've got bottle fillers around, you know, it might make some sense to have some kind of signage in the area that, that talks about, you know, you know, please, please make use of the bottle filler instead of, you know, leaving plastic, plastic bottles everywhere, that kind of thing.
Some of those bottle, bottle fillers will actually tell you how many bottles you're saving. Is that, does that have it?
Yeah, I don't think this one has it, but.
I must have one in school.
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll tell you once you fill up your bottle so many times, you save this many plastic bottles.
Right.
Is this, is it filtered? Do they have filters on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd be curious how often that would need to be changed. That's always something to think about too.
Any other questions? Well done, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
All right.
You know, the three main things that, uh, that, that any presentation like this needs is you have to identify the problem. You have to come up with a proposal, a solution, a proposed solution. And then, uh, and then one of the things that in the past has been, has been missing is the, uh, is understanding the cost of the project. And I want to congratulate all of you guys because you've all very well defined the problem. In each case, you've come with a proposed solution. And, uh, with, with, uh, with some investigation done on the cost side, I mean, I think in, in some cases, maybe we might be just a little bit light, but you know, I think they're well within the, within target, you know, of, of what you proposed. So I want to congratulate you all. You've done a great job. Thank you very much.
Yeah, um, so yeah, I don't really have anything else to add. I'm very proud of all of you, you know, and, um, um, I guess one thing, I, I don't know how the city council, you know, proceeds from here with these, um, proposals. I don't know if you want to speak on that at all, just so they know and if there's any, anything with that that they should be aware of.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, we've got a history of funding these projects. I mean, it didn't, doesn't take too far to look to see some of the ones that we've done in the past. Uh, we do set aside some money every year to fund these and this year, I can't remember what it was, twenty-five thousand, I think. It was a little less than we had done this year, but, uh, so what that is, I mean, the, the process would be that the city council would say, yes, we want to do this project. Um, and then we'll take, you know, take what your idea is and then go out and, and really, really put the numbers to it and kind of really look at what needs to be done. Uh, you know, there'll be decisions that need to be made for like the water fountain, you know, what do we do with the lion? What do we do with this thing? So, uh, you know, the idea will still be intact. It'll just maybe have to change a little bit. Um, but yeah, that, that would be kind of how it would go. Uh, I would, I would encourage you to be patient with these projects because sometimes it takes longer than, than you think they should. Cause I mean, we've just finished one this year from two years ago. So, you know, it happens. It sometimes takes a little bit of time, but, um, yeah, it would be kind of up to the city council to say, let's do that and let's move forward. Um, you know, we'll, we'll get the budget numbers, we'll get actual numbers and see what it looks like. There's some things in here that we can do, city can do. So.
In terms of labor and some of those things, you know, like the plumbing and, and, and some of that, those are typically done by city crews.
Yep.
On things like this.
Yeah, if there's any electrical error.
And then of course the street department, you know, has the ability to go out and do the dirt preparation at the, that, you know, in the parking lot. Put the, put the gravel down and spread it around and those kind of things. Those could all be done with city labor.
Yeah, I think it was good to come up with ideas that probably wouldn't think about. Or, or don't, we don't deal with some of the things they want to fix because, you know, we don't play this or that. So I think it's a good idea that they come in and do these problems.
You know, I think one of the cool things about, uh, about a number of these things is they make a lasting difference in the community and not all of you may decide to stay in Hillsborough, at least to start with. You know, we are all welcome to come back home anytime. The, well, like motel six, we're gonna leave the light on for you. You know, we are all welcome to come back home anytime, the, well, like Motel Six, we're gonna leave the light on for you. But uh, but you know, the, but when you do come back, when you do, uh as as you grow up, you'll be able to see. As these projects get done, that you made a difference in your community and I think that's again, something to commend yourselves for.
Nice, do you all have any questions for the city council here? Now you're probably wanting to get some pizza, cause it's lunchtime for you all now. Alright, do you wanna, maybe we.
Hope you guys dressed appropriately.